Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of October 21st, 2025. My name is Joe Mares. I am filling in for Babe, who's running a little late. You should be here, so. The first order of business is the minutes of the last meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Matt, I haven't looked at emails.
I made the corrections.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of wicked minor, wicked minor changes, not too New England. I don't even remember what they were. They were really inconsequential that Matt apparently agreed with, so.
Yeah, the edits were to capitalize Water Street.
Oh, yeah.
And I forgot what the other one was, but I changed that all.
Yeah, it was equally inconsequential. I'm sorry, I just spotted something. The T of Town Engineer next to Elizabeth's name is missing. May I make a motion that...
Where is that?
On staff present in the third line.
Oh geez, okay. Own engineer.
It's our own engineer. She's our own engineer.
Okay.
With that correction, I would move approval.
And I'll second.
Let's have discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, Joe.
Under the, under the section for the, the standard of conditions, maybe I didn't make myself clear. Let me just say, we were talking about having some type of a final inspection and approval. That's kind of like what I meant. This is viewed more as a, if you want to do it, we may show up. I'd like to see it be mandatory, if possible. So there should be some type of a checklist that we're using, where we go through the process and just check off everything that was completed.
And we have that for subdivisions.
So, so like, I guess the best way for, I don't know how the Planning Board can do this, but the best way for me to do it would be to have an ASBIL plan, so that I can then check the field to make sure it matches the ASBIL plan and then make sure the ASBIL plan matches the design plan.
And then what can we use for sign off?
Well, that's what I don't, that's, that's the part I, we can ask for an ASBIL plan, but I don't know, and we don't, there's nothing for us to be able to say.
I didn't know.
No, 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 I don't know what I'm trying to say, other than if they don't give us an ASBIL plan, I don't know what, what option we have, is I guess my only point.
Joe, is there something in the minutes that you think doesn't accurately refer?
So we were just looking, this section, the latest application, oh, I'm sorry, hold on. The standard conditions, we're talking about the time change, that's good. And then where I'm saying Mr. Mares asked to add a line about inspections to ensure town staff can access the property, certainly that, but I would like to see it refer to some type of a final inspection and approval.
So, so for a point of order, I think is what Martha was getting at, is we should, Joe's looking to amend the meeting minutes.
Correct.
To say, and final.
Final inspection.
Inspection.
And approval, yep.
And that would, that would accurately represent the discussion we had two weeks ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mares asked to add a line about inspections and final, a final inspection approval process.
Correct.
Yeah. And then... Matthew, does that work for you?
It does, but we can't sign these tonight because I have to make the change, so we'll have to sign off next meeting.
No problem.
I'll resend my second.
May I amend my motion to indicate that the minutes be amended to put a capital T in front of it for Town Engineer and to make the changes that Mr. Mares had just requested?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the second line of business, we've got 81 Ps, we have none, and we have a continuation of the site plan review of Five Water Street from the last meeting of 10/7/25.
We have, sir, we have amended plans per the request of the Planning Board. At a last meeting, we asked for the amendments to include... Roof drain, be tied to existing drainage system by licensed plumber. So condition, more long lines. Plans for the grease trap to be signed off by the Sewer Department, which the applicant will be able to talk about in a little bit. Dumpster location on landscape plan needs to match revised parking plan. It has been reflected in the revised plan. The book and page deed information is corrected on the landscape plan. That's also done. The screening details of the dumpster are added to the plans. And another condition to be considered, pre-standing sign is allowed, is not allowed without further approval from the Planning Board. So I guess the only question is, is how did it go with the Sewer Department today? For the applicant.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
I usually wasn't that meeting the applicant was, but I, then I came in after that and I did talk to John Menini and understood that the plans were approved as submitted. So the original plan, that was a grease trap only, the only change, you want me to wait till the other... Okay, the only change to the, to the grease trap plan was Mr. Menini wanted a manhole added on the, at the tie-in point where the domestic meets back to it, and I agreed to that. Of course, I agree, it's the sewer system, so I, and he had no problem with the rest of the plans, and they got approved.
I talked to the Sewer Department, saying that it's okay.
Great, great. Very good. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So again, staff, you're all set with this? Matt, you're, you're okay with this?
Yep.
So I would move approval of the site plan for Five Water Street, New Water Street, LLC. Can I make a complete sentence on that? Approve of site X.
I'll second.
I have no questions, okay.
Any further discussion?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to announce it, Babe?
Stay where you can take.
Okay, okay. All right, so then we have...
All set.
Thank you very much.
Are you in favor?
It was a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Joe.
So now we have a, a planned endorsement and a bond release for, that's Ariana Circle.
Yes, sir. This bond release request comes on the tail of town meeting. Town meeting voted last night to approve the layout plan for Ariana Circle. So this is the bond release, releasing the rest of the funds that are in, that are held by our town treasurer, treasurer collector, sorry, and also the endorsement of the plan that was approved at town meeting. These are all procedural elements to close out the project.
So the only outstanding item that I have is the recording of the deed.
Right.
So I, that's, it's very minor and very small amount, but I would suggest, I would recommend issuance of the bond release, subject to the recording, proof of recording.
Yep.
They, they need to, that needs the select board too, right?
Yes.
So it, it's going to take them a couple of days, but it shouldn't take them much more than that.
What do you mean that takes the select board also?
The, the, the plans that were, the street acceptance plans have to be signed by the Planning Board and the select board prior to being recorded.
Okay. So I have to give us, take a stab at this. Do we have to vote to endorse the plan, or is that just an amendment?
You're looking at two separate votes. One to release the bond, subject to the recording of the deeds, and then, and a separate motion to endorse the plan.
Okay. I move that the Planning Board endorse the plan.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three.
And I also move that the, the bond be released, subject to proof of, that the deed and plan have been recorded.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving along. We've got, the next order of business is the town meeting results discussion.
Just to open forum for the board, if you wanted to discuss what happened at town meeting last night. Obviously, the articles for the ADUs was passed as printed in the warrant. The private way for, I'm not even going to try to pronounce the riding gun club, was discontinued, and Ariana Circle was accepted, as we know, and these...
So McGill, the Tom portion of McGill and the easterly portion of Wales were approved to be discontinued. So the board should be seeing a site plan for the gun club. They are looking to put in a gate across the portion of McGill that has been discontinued and to create a turnaround for the Highway Department and Fire Department.
Oh, that's nice.
Come in the form of an 81P to get rid of the discontinued road as well. We might get one of those, so they have to get rid of it on paper as well.
That wouldn't be a P, that would be...
An 81X, sorry. ANR.
Well, it doesn't, so, you know, I'm not sure if it's an 81P or an 81X, but we'll let the other people figure that out. And that's, and they need to create the easement for the, for the turnaround, so they can do it when they do that. Probably just...
That would be a P.
Easement's not. Easement is a, no. Easement is an X, but maybe, maybe we can just have them deed a piece of property and then it would be an 81P, similar to the piece next to Andy Wayne. So I'll, I'll discuss that with them, because it's not going to matter much to them, nor does it really matter much to us.
I did propose an amendment to the, to the bylaw to eliminate the site plan, the useless...
The ADU.
Site plan, but it got shut down.
Good for trying.
I got out talked.
The two times I spoke to town meeting in the last few years, I got shut down on both.
I have your thoughts, sir.
I think, I think it's worthwhile that the, the board has a discussion on either attempting to remove or reword that first.
Simplify?
Yeah. At the next town meeting. I don't know that, while I think removing it makes the most sense, that particular section, I'm not sure that that's gonna, I don't know that that's going to pass, but I think, you know, the board needs to, and the other option, and I didn't look into it, was whether or not we could put the in-law apartment, the supplemental suite, back in to the regulations, because there's, you know, like the AD, the ADU is great for somebody and, and makes sense for somebody that wants to rent out an area, you know, rent out a unit of, on their property, but when, in most cases, when you have like an in-law apartment and you're looking to have, you're not, you're not really have, you don't really have two units, right? So like, that's the way my in-law apartment is set up. It's, it's not completely two spaces. So there's all these additional regulations that come into play on the building code side with an ADU, so.
ADU, by building code, they have to have two meters of being grass. If it's on a two, if it's with a two-family, they have to sprinkle it.
Fire separation walls.
Have their fire separation walls. So it's, for, for these people who think they're going to go into the ADUs and just be cheap, it's not.
Yeah, if you're trying to, if you're trying to make an in-law apartment, an ADU is not a cheap way to do it. It's a lot cheaper to do...
Matt, so for an ADU, you have to have fire separation walls, but for a three-family home, you do not? For example?
For a three-family, existing three-family doesn't, but to put an ADU in on a three, with a three-family...
But if you're building a three-family...
Then it does, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought, I didn't know that.
But if, like, so if you're...
Two-family also? I'm sorry, duplex fires, oh, no kidding.
If you take, if you take, if you take your existing home and you want to take your living room and, let's say you have a big living room and you want to change that into a bedroom and a little kitchenette.
Yeah.
You now have to, and a bathroom, you now have to build a firewall between your living room and the rest of your house, and you have to create a firewall on the ceiling and the floor. You have to have separate fire alarm connections.
I did not know that.
In, in theory at least, you're going to need separate water and sewer connections. So it's, it's really making a, making a much bigger deal of it than, than just being able to create an in-law apartment. And I think that's what, I mean, we, I know we had quite a few in-law apartments coming in front of us before the ADU thing came along, so, and, you know, I think that that's becoming common in and about. Now, whether or not we're allowed to have both, I, I don't know the answer to that. It's a legal question.
Right, right.
But that, I just think there's, I think that the majority of this board would like to see things simplified.
Right.
Especially for people that are trying to care for aging or ill loved ones.
Yeah. Or young kids starting having a family or...
Exactly.
Even like an hour, the door between the, the door between us would have to be a one-hour rated door.
Wow.
I mean, it's...
So I, I don't know, yeah, we'll have to, when you want to put that on, but it should be something that's on the agenda to discuss options. I don't know if you want...
We'll have to counsel first, have the counsel see if, if it's possible that we can do it.
I mean, is that, I guess, is that a preference, the, you're talking about the in-law?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think certainly having a longer conversation after the first of the year would certainly be in our best interest and have it as an agenda item and be able to even have town council here with us to be able, so everybody hears that same back and forth. I think it would be very important.
Joe, I'm anxious to see what the ADU site plan regulations or bylaw, how that will read. I was not able to attend the meeting at which the Planning Board discussed that, but I think perhaps a different approach. I think, I think it's going to be complicated the way it was.
It's, you need to be a lawyer.
It's going to be a rubber stamp.
Yeah, but I think, I think the way it's currently written, I think we're going to find it complicated.
It's, no, it's strictly, it's like a, a, a...
Right, but the way it's written, I think, is the site plan review shall be as above, except this sentence is excluded and that sentence is excluded.
And that sentence, and take out those three words from the fifth paragraph, second sentence. It's, it's...
So I actually prefer to have a separate site plan review section for ADU.
Question.
If you're going to continue having a site plan review, I agree.
Exactly.
How much does it, does it cost to do a site plan review?
Yeah, it's $150 application.
How much?
$150.
So it costs $150 to do nothing?
Yeah.
All right, so this is the other big thing. If you're, if you, if you wanted to put your, put an ADU in your basement, you wanted to finish your basement and make it an ADU or an in-law apartment, either way, you have to get a certified plot plan, which is going to cost you $2,000 to $3,000.
And you're not even extending anything.
You're already, you're within your four walls.
It's within the existing footprint. It's within the existing walls, you still have to do a $3,000 survey to prove absolutely nothing to anybody.
Right. Something that's already well established, because the building's there.
Hence going back to the in-law apartment discussion and all that. So yeah, certainly, it's, to me, it's going to be a longer discussion, with a lot of, lot of change, or not a lot of changes, but some, some good changes.
Yeah, so more discussion to come on those topics, I think.
But I would say, Matt, you should just make a note to yourself, maybe like in February.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to wait too long, because then, then you end up on top of the next town meeting.
Mark fills first.
So.
And the other thing with the, we are now in charge of stormwater management.
Yes, you are.
Or what?
You're in charge of stormwater management.
Yeah, that bylaw has to tell me as well.
With absolutely no discussion.
Right.
I thought, I thought eliminating the entire stormwater bylaw and replacing it with a brand-new one would, would have somebody say, hey, why are we changing the whole thing? So I'll, I'll be working with the consultant to, to tie up the rules and regulations, which this board needs to adopt by the end of November, I think.
All right. So it's like a good plan?
Thank you.
Yeah, so make sure that I, Matt, make sure that we put that on an agenda for...
I might have to do that by the next meeting, huh? Oh, what's the numbers look like?
Okay, next order of business. We've got the, any more, any more engineer updates?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
And Babe, do you have anything for chairman update?
Again, talking about the fees, could you send us out a, a list of all the fees that, for, somebody asked me today, I says, I got no idea, because we never collect money or anything, so it's all done ahead of time. I says, I can't even answer that question, because I, I really don't know.
Okay. Okay, and with business, what's the pleasure of the board?
I have finer updates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So ZBA might be going towards fillable applications online. So right now, we just have PDFs that folks have to print out and hand-write. So I produced some fillable ones where you can type it in, but you still have to print it out and sign it. I just don't know what the, what the Planning Board thinks of doing that for us. I've already created the forms, and they're available. I could circulate them to you to see, see what you think about it, and we could put it on our next agenda.
Why are you doing the ZBAs?
They, they asked me to do it. I had them, so it took like 25 minutes.
Just a question.
Yeah, so Larry had the applications, so I did the ones for the Planning Board ones, and I could circulate them to you guys to see how you like it. I did it for the, the ANRs, the 81Ps, the special permits, site plan review, waiver of site plan review, and amendment for site plan review. So I created fillable PDFs for all of those, and I could circulate them to you to see how you like it, and we could put it on our next agenda for comment.
You're not changing the form.
No, God, no, I'm just making it fillable.
Yeah.
So people can type it out.
That was the point. I don't think you guys, I mean, you guys...
It's less printable paperwork, same amount of paperwork.
Yeah, it's just harder to read people's handwriting sometimes, instead they're typing it out, but they still have to sign it. The only thing I added on each application was, these applications are complete unless it's signed by the property owner.
If you don't make any changes with Elizabeth, do we need to see it? If, if you promise not to change them in any way whatsoever?
Well, that's the one thing I did change.
He promised.
I did make a change to put a line on there to say that this, the application's incomplete if not signed by the property owner. So that is a change to the application.
I don't think you need to see it, do you, babe? Joe? If it doesn't change, we don't need to see it, though, do we?
Whether or not you like them as fillable applications.
It's a courtesy, I don't mind reviewing them.
I don't mind.
Nothing to look, I mean, nothing to, I could look at, we look at, I like to know what they look like anyway.
Okay.
Me too.
Draw my suggestion.
Me too.
I led you down.
Okay, anything else?
Support, support to fillable applications, or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Love them.
Okay. You guys want to take a vote on that, or?
No.
Okay, okay, just...
Love them.
Let's look at those, yeah. That's great, anything saves time, effort.
All right, that's all I have. I'm just setting the calendar for November. We're looking at the 4th and the 18th.
Fourth is election day.
Fourth is election day.
We can have, oh, yeah, you won't be here.
I can't be here.
We can have the meeting, the only thing we can't do is have a public hearing.
I don't think we have anything on the pipeline right now anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I worked the elections, so I won't be here.
Okay.
You have an election issue?
That, somebody just said there's an election November 4th. It's an election day. I know it's election day, but... But that's usually the federal, isn't it?
It's federal, yes.
Am I not?
It's a federal election day, but I don't know if there's anything.
Yeah, I'm not sure there actually is an election.
No, because we haven't had a primary yet or anything for the, for the election.
That's weird. You shouldn't put a time clock.
Well, that's...
Maybe they just put it in as a placeholder.
The second Tuesday following the first Monday is an election day in November, not a lot.
This is the first Tuesday.
Yeah, the second one's better.
Mine says election day, too.
It's got to follow the first Monday.
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't actually think there is an election.
Can you have election day and not have an election?
No, it's the calendar, so this is the election day.
Yeah.
It doesn't, this...
There's not an election day every year?
No.
No.
Okay.
Overall, anyway. It's like every two years for Senate.
You think among these smart people in this room?
Six for Senate and two for, every two for Congress.
If there were, we would have had a, we would have had a primary in September to get on to the, to the ballot, so it was no...
Okay.
Good point.
So...
They get ready to run for governor next year, so next, next September, we'll have primaries, and then we'll have the governor's election.
So for the 4th, I'm going to want some time, I'll, I'm going to get you guys the stormwater regulations somehow before the 4th, so that you can look at them before, and we can discuss them on the 4th, if you guys have any, I was, stormwater rules and regulations.
That's good.
Fourth, and then the other one will be the 18th.
That's the one I'll need you to adopt.
Okay, we've concluded the items on the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
We enjoy it.
Second.
We'll do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.